Six oh oh seven seven to the attention of the manager's office, or can be placed in the exterior drop box on the west side of Skokie Village Hall. Each village board meeting agenda includes time for public comments, and individuals wishing to speak on an issue will be allocated three minutes to address the village board. And now, it's my pleasure to introduce village clerk Promote Shaw, who will be leading us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The meeting will come to order, and the clerk will please call the roll.
Trustee Sutker.
Here.
Trustee Robinson.
Here.
Trustee Boone.
Here.
Trustee Johnson.
Here.
Trustee Pure Slovein.
Here.
Trustee Klein.
Here.
Mayor Vandusen.
Aye, we have a quorum. The next item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda for this evening's meeting, is there a motion? Trustee Sutker, seconded by trustee Klein.
Mayor, if I could.
Yes, certainly.
I would like to clarify at the beginning of this evening's meeting that we are deferring to a future meeting, item D on my report. Item D concerns the proposed new commission to focus on our police department's policies and practices concerning use of force and other points of community engagement. After consultation with trustees Sutker and Pure Slovein, who serve as liaisons to the village Public Safety Commission, the mayor, village manager, and I concluded that it would be helpful to invoke members of the committee that drafted the Public Safety Commission's report prior to seeking community comment and board approval. We value the work of the committee, and its review of the draft ordinance is prudent, and will assure that the ordinance is drafted aligns with the intent of its report.
Okay, first reading under Michael Lorge's report, item D therefore is taken off the agenda for this evening. Is there anything else anybody would like to have removed? If not, call the roll, please.
Trustee Sutker.
Aye.
Trustee Robinson.
Aye.
Trustee Boone.
Aye.
Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Pure Slovein.
Aye.
Trustee Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Vandusen.
Aye, the motion passes. Is Pamela Sloan with us this evening? Thank you. With that vote, Ms. Sloan's appointment to the Fine Arts Commission is approved, and is Ann Goldshaft with us? Ann actually is being appointed to the Beautification and Improvement Commission. I apologize for the error. It should have been listed under beautification, so... Is... are you Ms. Goldshaft by any chance? No, okay. Pamela, thank you for volunteering to be on our Fine Arts Commission. I think you're going to enjoy it very much. It's a very active commission, does great things for the community, and we look forward to your participation. Thank you very much. The next is a presentation. The 11th Annual Public Health Partners of Excellence Awards. It'll be presented by the chairman of our Board of Health, Dr. William Werner, along with our Director of Health, Michael Charlie.
Good evening, the board. Mayor Vandusen. With me tonight, I have the Chair of the Board of Health, of course, Dr. Bill Werner. I also have personal health supervisor Sue Reesberg. I don't know, you all come up, come on up, with me tonight to present these awards. So each year, the Health and Human Services Department and the Board of Health recognize individuals or organizations that have provided exceptional support of public health initiatives in the community with the Public Health Partners in Excellence Awards. This year's award recipients have something in common, and that is that they all assisted us in our COVID-19 vaccination campaign, and helped us during the COVID-19 pandemic. They all really were an essential part in ensuring that our COVID-19 response and the campaign to vaccinate individuals was just a huge success here in Skokie. What I'll be doing is I'll be naming each organization, and as I name each organization, I'd like, if there's somebody representing the organization, to come up and be publicly recognized in front of the board. I will also say a few nice things about them. And we're going to give them this wonderful plaque tonight that recognizes their contribution to public health in the village of Skokie. So the first organization I'd like to present to is the Erie Crown Hebrew Day School. And I know that Rabbi Eli Samba is here tonight, but he also has a giant contingent with him tonight also. And I'd also like, anybody who's from Erie Crown, please stand up. So I'd like to say a couple of things about Erie Crown Hebrew Day School. And no matter what, I'm going to preface this by saying, no matter what I say about any of these organizations, I really don't have enough time to communicate how thankful I am as a newer director that came here in November, and on behalf of the village and Health and Human Services, because without them, none of which you've seen in regards to our response could have happened with the smaller staff we have in Health and Human Services in the village. So they're receiving the award for being a partner, collaborator, champion, and advocate during the COVID-19 pandemic. They donated this wonderful space for our mass vaccination site, 7770 Frontage Road, for many months, months, not a week or two, months, to service the village's mass vaccination site. This act of giving was incredibly unselfish, philanthropic, and generous. This extraordinary act of community giving allowed the village's Health and Human Services Department to administer over 28,000 COVID-19 vaccine doses, preventing the spread of disease and really saving Skokie lives. So on behalf of the Board of Health and Health and Human Services, I wanted to thank you with this plaque. You've done a ton for the village, and again, thank you very much. Okay, the second organization I'd like to thank is Hatzalah Chicago. And I'm not sure if Simcha Frank is here tonight. Oh, come on, I'll get that. Come on up. He's the chief of operations and the director of operations. I guess he's got two titles over with them. But so Hatzalah, their staff and volunteers volunteered countless hours at the village's COVID-19 mass vaccination site. They were our paramedics onsite, volunteering their time for free, providing professional emergency medical services to individuals receiving the COVID-19 vaccine. The level of care Hatzalah provided was truly amazing. And this extraordinary act of community giving ensured that each individual's safety was given top priority during their vaccination experience. And I do know I saw them in action. I know Kenny is here tonight, too. I saw Kenny over there, too, helping out. And really, I mean, because of them, we ensured anybody that was being vaccinated and sitting there in the 15-minute area or even during the vaccination process, whether it was anxiety or some sort of allergic reaction, we were one of, if not the safest vaccination clinic that I know of. So I really want to thank them, and again, here's a plaque thanking you for everything you've done. Okay, next, I'd like to give an award to two different schools. So these are two separate schools that donated nursing students and staff to assist us with our vaccination efforts. As you guys know, we have a total of four nurses downstairs. We had 15 lines of service out on site, so 15 minus four is nine. We needed 15 assistants. We couldn't have done it without these nursing students. They were just amazing. So tonight, I'd like to present an award to North Park College, the North Parks College Nursing Program. And it's Heather Duncan here tonight, come on up. She's the Associate Professor of Nursing. And also, too, I'm going to have this other group come up, too, if they're here, Oakton Community College. Is anyone here representing them tonight? Come on up, so. And I don't know if you're Margaret Gass or you're... Here's Margaret Gass, and she's the Chair of the Department of Nursing. So let me tell you a little bit about both these organizations. So both of them volunteered. We have a very unique agreement with both of these schools where we help their students out, but they also help us out. And we provide them hours for their nursing program, but they also volunteered countless hours, hundreds, thousands of hours, administering vaccine to thousands of individuals at the village of that vaccination sites. Their clinical professionalism ensured that vaccines were administered with compassion, and with each individual's safety a top priority. This unique collaboration between the Health and Human Services Department and their nursing programs was a key part in ensuring vaccines were administered in a timely manner to Skokie residents. Healthcare professionals, educators, group homes, licensed daycare staff. I mean, we vaccinated all sorts of people in a safe and efficient manner. We couldn't have done it without your amazing nursing programs. I know that this goes well beyond the mass vaccination clinic. They're still assisting us till this day here at Village Hall to vaccinate individuals who come here to Village Hall. So again, thank you so much. We really, really appreciate it.
I just want to say, this is especially meaningful that we work together as a team with clinicians and the nursing students. And especially since I'm a North Park grad, I was really pleased to see this work out.
Okay. I also want to say that we've had a partnership with Oakton Community College for the past 12 years now. They started with us during H1N1 and have continued yearly with our community flu clinic since then. So we've had a wonderful, long partnership with them. And we have begun a partnership with North Park, and we hope that it will be long-lasting as well. So I want to thank them both, because we could not have done it without them. Thank you.
Okay, next up is the Skokie Park District. I know Michelle Tough is here, I saw her in the back. She's the Executive Director of the Park District. If you can come on up. So for Park District staff, they worked, again, countless hours at our village's mass vaccination site. When we were looking for individuals to assist us, again, we had about 52 people we staffed that clinic with when we ran that clinic over there. We needed assistance, and Michelle stepped up to the plate. She was actually part of the initial process when we were looking for a site, and she's assisted us with flu clinic sites in the past, and she's always been an amazing partner. Not only her, but the Park District. So they did provide us with staff to work the front desk. So as you walked into the facility, pretty much the first people that greeted you were Park District staff along with village staff. They welcomed people into the clinic, they checked them in. And I will say, it truly takes a village. And when I say a village, it's not just here at Village Hall. It's the Park District, it's the library, it's other organizations in the village to help us in our time of need. And definitely, the Park District did that. And again, without your help, we just couldn't have done this. So again, thank you to the Park District, and... Okay, last but not least, I said this would be about six minutes. I think I've gone over, so. But the Skokie Public Library. We have Laura McGrath here, she's the Deputy Director at the library. So they volunteered, again, countless hours of their staff time to assist us with answering phone calls. I know that John, I'm looking at John and Nick. You remember what it was like, how many phone calls we were receiving, because everybody wanted the vaccine for a while there. And we were getting hundreds, if not thousands, of calls every day. And with our existing staff, even though we set up like another phone bank and we were doing other things, it was hard to keep up. And when we reached out to the library, they were more than happy to donate their staff. Their staff could be doing other things to answer phone calls for us. Not only did they answer phone calls, but they did it in a professional manner. I think most people in the village calling in probably thought they worked in the Health Department, but they were actually over there, over at the library, answering these calls. So they were a valuable asset. And their willingness to donate their staff to assist the village ensured that the village could respond to individuals in a prompt, professional manner. Again, a big part of our team, and I wanted to thank the library for all of their help. So those are all the organizations. I have one last thing to say, is that I just wanted to say that we are eternally grateful to these organizations for their amazing contributions, and we look forward to continued partnerships with everybody moving forward. So thank you very much.
I would only add, Dr. Warner, thank you, and the Board of Health. Mike, thank you. Sue, thank you. The amount of time and the cooperation that everybody gave in this effort was nothing short of astounding. When you think that over a period of just a couple months, we not only responded to thousands of phone calls, but also vaccinated 28,000 shots. There was good reason why our positivity rate is under 1%. The last time I looked, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it was 0.83%. There's a reason for that, and that is that when any emergency ever arises, we all work together. We don't work in silos. And Doctor, thank you for your leadership. I don't know how many times I saw you downstairs doing the contact tracing. Part of all of this was, I think, due to Sue Reesberg and the planning that we began doing after H1N1. We were among the very first in the state to do contact tracing from the very beginning. In December of 2019, we began to discuss, what would our path be if this became a pandemic? And being a municipality with people from all over the world, our residents travel all over the world, and that's a blessing for all of us. But it also meant the potential that our residents could bring home the pandemic from overseas. And we were prepared, because we did have a plan that set out more than 10 years ago. So Doctor, again, thank you. Michael, Sue, all of you from the institutions. And would Brian stand up? I do want to give a shout out to Brian. When we originally were looking, Brian volunteered. And thank you also for agreeing to be on the Economic Development Commission. We're going to put you to work. And we're also going to put to work Ann and Pamela as well. So thank you very much, we're deeply appreciative. And the next item on the agenda is the lengthy report of our village manager, John Lockerbie.
Thank you, Mayor Vandusen, Village Board. Good evening, everyone. I'm pleased to report, I have no report this evening.
I would also point out, on the consent agenda was a proclamation recognizing the longtime good works of Rabbi Neil Bree, his 50th anniversary. A good friend to the village and somebody who has worked with all of us over time. Next is the report of our Corporation Council, Michael Lorge.
Thank you, Mayor, trustees. Good evening, everyone. Item A is an ordinance which was on the consent agenda at the beginning of this evening's meeting and was adopted at that time. Item B is an ordinance which is on my report for second reading and adoption tonight. Pursuant to our routine procedures, it would normally be on the consent agenda for second reading, but it has been removed from the consent agenda for reasons which will be explained later in this statement. The first reading was on August 16, 2021. This ordinance will grant a special use permit to the property located at 7309 Monticello Avenue, Skokie, to allow a cremation service in an M3 industrial district. Additionally, it will grant relief from Chapter 118, Section 118-218 of the Skokie Village Code in order to allow for seven rather than 16 off-street parking spaces. The plans are for the existing building to be utilized as a crematory, which is allowed with a special use permit in the M3 zoning district. The crematory will have two retorts on site that will not be visible from Monticello Avenue. Any type of funeral service or visitation would be held off-site at a funeral home in Chicago. Subsequent to the August 16, 2021 village board meeting, when this was introduced as a planned commission case, and as it was presented in first reading at that time, staff determined that the planned commission had inadvertently omitted the recommendation regarding the parking relief sought from Chapter 118, Section 118-218 of the Village Code. The request for parking relief was stated in the staff report, which is included in the planned commission report, and which was all part of the packets which you received. However, a separate vote on the request of relief was not taken. As a procedural oversight, it has been inserted properly into the ordinance that's before you tonight and will be part of the board's consideration tonight. For clarity, a vote in support of this ordinance will include the parking relief, which was the intent of the staff and the commission that night. Mayor, I would request board action on this matter.
A motion on item D, an ordinance granting special use permit to allow cremation services at 7309 Monticello in Skokie in the M3 industrial district.
Including...
Including the relief from the Chapter 118, Section 118-218 of the Skokie Village Code. Motion is in order. Trustee, seconded by trustee Johnson. Are there any comments or questions? If not, I'll call the roll, please.
Trustee Sutker.
Aye.
Trustee Robinson.
Aye.
Trustee Boone.
Aye.
Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Pure Slovein.
Aye.
Trustee Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Vandusen.
Aye, the motion passes.
Thank you. Item C is a resolution in my report for first reading and board action tonight. This resolution approves the John K. Farhand subdivision plat of subdivision dated September 15, 2021, and will effectively consolidate three parcels into one for the property located at 8542 Harding Avenue in an R2 single-family district. A memorandum dated September 9, 2021 from Community Development Director Matt Brandmeyer has been part of your packet and is part of this explanation for tonight. Mayor, we would request board action on this.
A motion to concur in a resolution approving a plat of subdivision for the property located at 8542 Harding in Skokie in the R2 single-family district is in order. Trustee Klein, seconded by trustee Sutker. Are there any comments or questions? If not, I'll call the roll, please.
Trustee Sutker.
Aye.
Trustee Robinson.
Aye.
Trustee Boone.
Aye.
Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Pure Slovein.
Aye.
Trustee Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Vandusen.
Aye, the motion passes.
Mayor, although not as quick as the village manager, that does conclude my report for tonight.
Thank you. The concluding item on the agenda this evening is public comment. Is there anybody who wishes to address the village board? Yes, sir. If you would come up, yeah.
Thanks for the couple minutes. Ron. Thanks for the couple minutes. Just want to touch on a couple items. Most of it's traffic-related and pedestrian safety-related, so probably for the chief, if you take a note. But has anyone for the new Amazon, has there been a traffic study? I haven't been totally in tune with it, except I did hear someone up a couple weeks ago bringing up the accident aftermath, what happens at the end? You know, when there's an accident, then everyone investigates everything? Someone made a comment a few weeks ago. But if you, I don't know if anyone at the board is familiar with the area, has visited it, but it's a debacle at certainly midday, going around Tui, Linder, Frontage. That whole area is just congested with all these like DoorDash going to the restaurants along Tui Nile Center, In-N-Out, the Walmart. Enough said on that, I don't know if that was a consideration. I haven't been totally in tune. Maybe they're going to do traffic lights at Linder and the cross streets in there, but something needs to be looked at, because it's going to be bad. Enough on that. I challenge, or I don't know, radar control in Skokie for speed. I don't know if they have any, if you're going to divulge any information on that, but Howard and Oakton from McCormick going west, I probably don't have to tell you, cars are speeding all over Illinois. But Howard's a bad one. People are, it's a two-lane, and people are passing people on the left. So you're, you know, it's all the K-streets going down. What's going to happen one day is someone's going to be heading westbound or eastbound and going to be getting hit with a car passing on the left. I know that it's a problem all over, but I just thought I'd bring that out. Same thing with Oakton. I mean, it's that McCormick area, it's just... The bigger issue that I wanted to bring up, though, is that trail crossing at Howard and Skokie Boulevard just east. If you're going east, okay, there's two lanes most of the way till you get to that crossing, and then it kind of merges almost when you get in. The problem's going to be, there's no traffic arrow showing that the lane ends. So what's going to happen, and I've seen it several times, someone's going to be crossing from north to south, and it's going to get hit by someone coming up that outer curb lane. There's a trail crossing sign, probably, I don't know, 100 feet from the thing. You know, it puts signs all up, no one sees them anyway. That really, the curb needs to be brought out to shut that lane down. Someone's going to get hit. You know, there's a lot of elderly people doing their walks there, and... And that Lincoln and Jarvis one isn't much better. It's two lanes, but it's that same thing, that outer lane. People going from north to south, you know, car stopping the... And then everyone says, well, you have to be careful when you're driving, but everyone knows that everyone is speeding and everything. So it gets to speed. I don't know that Skokie, I haven't seen a radar car, and... Honestly, I can't remember. My dad used to make the joke, it's a souvenir to get a speeding ticket in Skokie. So not to say about the winter parking tickets that we all get and the vehicle sticker, that seems to be okay, but I think we need a little bit better radar enforcement. My two cents. Someone's going to get killed, though, you know, again. Thanks for your time.
I couldn't agree with you more about speeding.
It's a problem all over, I'm glad, but I think we can do a better job.
It is everywhere, and we have tried innumerable things over time. We all, and I do mean all of us, have got to be more conscious of it. And particularly when you mentioned the trail. I've been down in that area, and you just, you have to be conscious to stop. And... I've been down in that area, and you just, you have to be conscious to stop, and we'll take it to heart. I couldn't agree with you more on that whole subject. So thank you very much for the comment. Did anybody else wish, yes?
I'll take my mask off because it's hard to have a mask and glasses on. Good evening, mayor and trustees. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of this body today. My name is Vicky Wolfinger. I'm a Skokie community member, a District 219 SRO Task Force member, and a parent of a high school student at District 219. Let me first start off by saying this is not an anti-police concern, it is a police accountability request. I recently reviewed a police memorandum dated August 25th. This memorandum on page 12 of the village manager's report outlined the D-219 SRO hiring and process. Paragraph 3 in particular stood out to me. It states, "Based on the feedback from District 219 administrators and their SRO Task Force, it became clear the role and duties of our SROs are often greatly misunderstood. As a member of the SRO Task Force, I would like to clarify this point and give you more information of the findings, which are unfortunately being disregarded currently by the village, by District 219, and the Police Department. First, I would like to address the point of misunderstanding the SRO program. The District 219 Task Force was composed of educators, scholars, historians, child advocates, medical providers, mathematicians, attorneys, and other professionals. I can assure you that we had a group of brilliant minds, all fully capable of gathering, reading, and interpreting data, and peer-reviewed documents. We did not misunderstand. Second, our recommendations were based on scholarly-reviewed data, not news articles, not opinion pieces, facts. Third, our task force overwhelmingly supported the removal of the SRO from the building. There was a difference of opinion on whether to continue the IGA, but with overwhelming, but the overwhelming recommendation was to remove armed police officers from our teaching institutions. The exact same recommendation was echoed by District 219 Cabinet. Fourth, our task force overwhelmingly recommended establishing an SRO accountability committee. Based on our findings, this program has never been evaluated." I'm going to repeat this. "This program has never been evaluated." How does a school district allow a program to continue to exist with a potential of grave risk and not evaluate it on a regular basis? Does our English program get evaluated? Does our math program get evaluated? I'm pretty confident when I say we would never allow programs that show no benefit and show high risk of potential harm to students would not continue in our district or in our village. Not so with this program, why? How do we justify a program without any hard data that is, that shows it is actually beneficial to students? Five, our task force recommendations included robust training, included trauma-informed training, anti-bias training, equity and restorative practice training. There is not one word in the department memorandum recommending or supporting any specialized training of our SROs. I've asked this question of our village and police department many times and yet to receive an answer. What qualifies our SROs to work with students? What characteristics do they have to interact with the complex behaviors of teenagers? What special training do they receive and who keeps them accountable for their training? Here are some facts from our task SRO findings. Our data is glaring, and to dismiss it is a statement in itself, and it is the opposite of the lawn signs plastered all over our towns stating "Skokie welcomes everyone." There are existing complaints against SROs. There's no transparent or anonymous process to file a complaint without going directly to the Police Department. This certainly does not encourage open communication between the community and the Police Department and can be intimidating and harmful to many. Our SRO program has never been evaluated. Our SRO self-reports to the superiors on an annual basis. What kind of program that directly impacts children does not get a regular review, doesn't have goals, and evaluates itself? There's no existing national data to show that SROs have been effective in keeping schools safer. There were SROs in both Parkland and Columbine. In fact, the opposite is true. An NCBI NIH report shows that, quote, "The growth of the SPO," which is the School Police Officer Workforce, "has coincided with the growth of criminalizing student behavior. In urban jurisdictions, an estimated quarter of new charges filed against youth were school-related, and one out of every six charge in schools occurred in cases where no crime was committed but an SRO was present." Southern Poverty Law states, "Research shows that just the presence of police officers in schools increases their likelihood that students will be referred to law enforcement for adolescent behavior, children's behavior that every single one of us exhibited at some point when we were teenagers. These are not criminals, they're children." These laws often disproportionately affect our community members of color and kids with 504 and IEP plans. Our Police Department has not followed the intergovernmental agreement and has not been held accountable for not doing so. How many other contracts does the village hold where we don't keep the contractor accountable for their work? And how many programs do we have that we don't evaluate? Finally, our schools are secure. They are secure and safe without the presence of a police officer in the building. There are numerous safety mechanisms already in place within our building which provide a physically and mentally safe educational environment for all of our children. So I came here today to get some answers and to clear up some mistruths being spread in our community. I'm also here to ask for accountability from our village and Police Department and District 219. It is essential that we all take part in an honest conversation with ourselves and within our village. To say "Skokie welcomes everyone" is just that, words. Actions speak louder. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the village board? If not...
My name is Carrie Bradan, and I am a resident of Skokie, and I thank you for removing the new commission from the agenda tonight to send it back for further review and work with the Public Safety Commission. I will read a prepared statement, and this feedback is really for the folks who will be reworking that and revising the proposed ordinance. That Skokie Police Engagement Commission proposed ordinance has a sentence acknowledging the reality of systemic racism and the need for, quote, "A process of vigilance, deep commitment, and ongoing introspection." Unfortunately, the rest of the ordinance as it exists right now glosses right over racism and doesn't reflect any honest introspection. It doesn't name any indicators of systemic racism in Skokie, it doesn't name what it's there to work on, and it doesn't reflect the real purpose of a community review board, transparency, accountability, and justice. The ordinance as it exists now reflects a pattern of denial that I've witnessed here in Skokie that believes that there really isn't any work to be done here in Skokie, that we don't have a problem of systemic racism here. I shared in a previous public comment statistics about the huge racial disparities in Skokie and rates of arrest and use of force, including the fact that a black person in Skokie is nine times more likely to be arrested than a white person. When I shared that statistic, a trustee dismissed this glaring injustice by saying that the disparity is because the black people arrested are not from Skokie and are coming here to commit crimes. That idea is very common and a very pervasive racist myth, that black people are not from here but are rather an outside threat to our safety. I have heard countless stories from people of color of being followed and stopped by Skokie police and having white Skokie residents call the police on them for no reason other than their race. The myth that black people are a threat reverses the direction of causation. The problem is actually the surveillance and overpolicing of black people, not their behavior. I hope you hear this not as an attack. It is not. It is an invitation to, that introspection that is in that sentence of the ordinance. It's an invitation to introspection and to growth. We have all been affected by this racist myth that's been used for hundreds of years to exploit and exclude black people. This unfounded fear of black bodies feeds the criminalization, surveillance, harassment, assault, and incarceration of black people. It is a vicious cycle. Fear black people as criminals and outsiders, overpolice and incarcerate them at rates dramatically higher than white people, and then use that as proof that black people are criminals needing overpolicing. I know it's uncomfortable to truly examine how racism functions in our systems, in our minds, and in our bodies, not to just add one sentence to an ordinance that sounds good politically. But trying to avoid talking about racism for fear of controversy or discomfort prioritizes white comfort over black lives. We need to step into the discomfort, knowing that we will sometimes say the wrong things and make mistakes, and that we can be strong enough to hear when we get it wrong and work to make it right. We have to name the problems and get to work to fix them. I urge you to please, as you amend this ordinance, make, focus on making it a commission that is focused on accountability, transparency, and equity with full and timely access to data and incident findings. Meeting semi-annually is not nearly enough to make any real change. Please don't make people harmed by police use of force wait half a year for public review. Also, please appoint commissioners who have expertise in equity and trauma and lived experience as members of groups disproportionately impacted by police use of force. And please make the commission meetings and recommendations public and transparent. Please commit to hearing the truth in these data and do not dismiss hard truths out of a desire for comfort or political gain. Please set specific outcomes to eliminate racial disparities with clear timelines and accountability. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the board? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Louis Mercer, I'm a Skokie resident, and I'm up for two points. First is to reiterate what Carrie just said. You know, one of the things that I find interesting, I'm a historian, so I, and I serve on the Human Relations Commission, and in studying the history of the Human Relations Commission and its formation, I read about the first black families that moved here to Skokie, and obviously, the open housing laws that were being passed at the time when that was happening, you know, there was a push to try and, you know, welcome those families, and that was part of the Human Relations Commission formation, was to obviously enforce this fair housing rules and laws that were being passed here. But in the meantime, those black families were facing harassment from police, Skokie police. And there's really interesting stories, actually, you can find it at the Skokie Library, they have some archives that talk about how the police would arrest the children of these families because they didn't believe they lived here, and they would bring them home because the children said, no, this is where we live, and they'd bring them home, and then another police officer would do it the next day. And so there's, there's these sort of narratives that are really interesting. So this is a long problem that we have of problems with race and policing that I think need to continue to be addressed, and I'm really pleased to hear that we're kicking it back to the, to the Public Safety Commission because I was concerned about the change in the language, and so I'm glad to hear that that's happening. The second reason I stand is to also support what Vicky Wolfinger was talking about, which is I very much support the removal of SROs from schools. I said I was a historian, I studied the history of police in Chicago schools, so I've done a lot of research on that, and the history that I've researched, I was able to share with the D-219 Task Force, but just very briefly, you know, part of my, my research finds that the reason police came into schools was essentially to quell student activism amongst black and brown students in Chicago in the 1960s. And unfortunately, obviously, that has, that purpose has continued in many different ways and different iterations, and there's different excuses for why police need to be in schools that keep getting, you know, reviewed over and over again, but as Vicky so eloquently put it, the unfortunate result is that black and brown students are often targeted by these police officers for arrest far more often than their white peers, and it's very concerning. And as the SRO Task Force recommended, there, these officers need to be removed from the schools, and I, and I stand in support of that today. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the board? Yes, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity, mayor and board of trustees. My name is Matt Temkin, and I am a resident of Skokie. I'd like to start my public comment by also addressing the decision to continue to not read public comments aloud during, from community members who cannot attend. There's nothing more important in local government than transparency and civic participation, and the village's refusal to allow public comments from those who were not in attendance is unacceptable and in direct contradiction to democracy, particularly in the middle of a pandemic. For a village that continues to proclaim that we welcome everyone, this continued practice is not in support of this mantra. The second point I'd like to make is in relation to the Public Safety Commission's recommendations, and the villages turn away from those recommendations. I do appreciate that the Public Safety Engagement Commission has gone back to the Safety Commission for further review, but I still want to comment on this. After the commission's great effort and the significant number of local organizations that contributed to the process of reviewing Skokie Police Department's use of force policy, as a starting point to further change, a number of important recommendations were made that were simple and easy to implement, especially in light of mandatory changes coming by way of state law. The crux of the recommendations made and the acknowledgement of the commission is that systemic racism embedded in our policing in Skokie and the disproportionate arrest and use of force by officers against BIOPAC folks. The ordinance proposed to create the Skokie Police Engagement Commission barely mentioned systemic racism, which is in part of the reason this new commission is being created, to address injustice, accountability, and transparency. Throughout the five years I have lived in Skokie, I've continued to be dismayed at the lack of acknowledgement, downright denial, and the incredible pushback against the very real anti-blackness within the village's borders. We have real data that is undeniable, but we have trustees repeating tropes of criminal behavior from outsiders, and we often only pay lip service to equity. Throughout my conversations with current, former, and future black residents of Skokie, the commonality is that Skokie is not welcoming, that they are overpoliced and over surveilled and often treated as outsiders. The time is now to have these uncomfortable conversations that are extremely necessary conversations, that we must make immediate changes and make amends. We must have this new commission be transparent and accountable by not solely reporting to the mayor without changes, continue to give the appearance of secrecy, and that this commission is unimportant. We must have this new commission meet more than twice a year, they should issue public reports, and include members with both lived experience of the negative effects of policing, as well include reimagining public safety through an equity lens. Thank you.
Thank you. All of the commission's reports will be public, they will be on the village's website, and the purpose of the ordinance is to establish the commission. The report speaks for itself, the village board has accepted the report. Is there anybody else who wishes to address? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Nicole Reynolds. I'm actually here speaking on behalf of someone who could not be here tonight, so I'll read I'm actually here speaking on behalf of someone who could not be here tonight, so I'll read her letter. Dear Mayor Van Dusen and Board of Trustees, I have requested that someone read this letter for me because I have to be home tonight with my unvaccinated young child, and the board's policy of excluding emailed public comments from public review excludes me. I request that you revise your policy to read public comments aloud in meetings and/or to include them as part of the minutes of the meeting so that they are...
Wait a minute, they are included?
I'm just reading her, her email.
Okay, well, I mean, it's a misstatement. Go ahead.
So that they are publicly available. I am very glad today that Skokie is proposing to create a new commission to assess Skokie police's use of force and is affirming that this is necessary to address systemic racism and to live up to our values of social justice and inclusiveness. The name and wording establishing the commission, however, are very concerning. The term "police engagement" seems to be used as a supercategory and euphemism for use of force. In contract, the Public Safety Commission's recommendations for this commission drew a clear distinction. The community review board's mandate was narrowly focused on reviewing use of force statistics, and the recommendation fell under the header "Recommendations for Transparency and Accountability in Their Findings," a totally separate section from "Recommendations for Trust and Community Engagement." Use of force isn't just another form of community engagement, and this commission needs to be focused specifically on use of force, because that's why it's being established, and because it's only meeting twice a year, so it can't possibly do justice to a use of force review if its purpose is diluted. I will say this email was written yesterday prior to the change that happened today at the meeting. The creation and purpose wording for this commission drastically dilutes its purpose by tasking it with providing recommendations on all forms of community engagement, and is also phrased in a very unclear way. It says the commission will create a process for community input, but then says it will do so by evaluation of use of force statistics. I'm not sure how evaluating use of force statistics can be the method by which a process for community input is created, so the phrase just doesn't make sense. Evaluating use of force statistics is a way to promote transparency and accountability. Facilitating community input specifically on use of force is also a way to promote transparency and accountability and might reasonably be placed within the purview of this commission, but if so, should be listed as a separate task. I am very doubtful that establishing a Skokie Police Engagement Commission as outlined today will serve the purpose of transparency and accountability laid out for it by the Public Safety Commission. I urge the board to return to the specific words and intent of the Public Safety Commission's recommendations and to change this new commission's name and mandate so that it can provide the intended oversight. Written by Shira Hammond. Thank you.
Can you forward that to us?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the board? If not, trustee Sutker?
I move we adjourn.
Village board is adjourned.